It's raining.
No rain here, but clouds all around and amazing sky.
And I've got a good thunder and lightning storm with rain.
Oh, right on.
That's light, it's lighting up pretty good around here.
Where are you?
Oxnard.
Oh, cool. Well, send us a couple inches.
Yeah, I know, right? I think we could all use it.
I heard Thousand Oaks is the same, Richard. Lots of rain and lightning, thunder.
Nice.
I hope my dog finds her way inside. She has a doggy door. I think she's smart enough.
She may like the rain.
Nope.
Okay, I think I was able to unmute myself. Uh, one, two, three, four. Okay. Let's call the meeting to order. This is the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for October 4, 2021. Can you call the role, please? Patricia?
Yes. Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Maza.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Unmute.
Unmute.
You're muted, Dennis.
I'm here.
Vice Chair Wile.
Here.
Chair Jennings.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I understand from we're now operating under new legislation, so I don't need to run my spiel that I usually run at the beginning of the meetings about Zoom meetings. It's all on the first page of the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda, please?
I move we approve the agenda with item 4A continued to a date uncertain, but also like to request that items 4B and 4C be heard concurrently as they were in 2018.
Uh, yeah, okay, I that's really not part of the agenda, but I think we can talk about doing that. That I think the idea was that we would combine the hearings would be separate orders, but we'll combine the hearings on 4B and 4C and the applicant team would get 30 minutes. Members of the public speaking would get six minutes. We double up everything. So unless there's some objection from the city attorney, we can operate that way. Patrick?
No, no, none, Chair Jennings.
Okay, so that's the motion, that John's motion to approve the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
Move in second to call the role, please. Patricia.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. Commissioner Maza.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Vote carries, motion carries.
Thank you. We need a report on the posting of the agenda.
Yes, the agenda for this meeting was properly posted on September 24th, 2021.
Now we're at item two on the agenda, 2A is communications from the public regarding matters which are on our jurisdiction, under our jurisdiction, but not on our agenda. Do we have any speakers, Patricia?
Yes, we have one speaker, Hannah George, but she, let's ask her if she meant to sign up for items 4B and 4C.
Can you unmute her so we can do that?
I'm sorry, who was that? Do you want to mute it?
Hannah George.
I see a Janice.
Yes, there are multiple Georges that are signed up to speak under 4B and 4C.
I only have one in the meeting right now.
There it is. There it just, it just appeared, entered the waiting room, admit.
Okay.
Okay, there, there.
There it is.
Oh, they're actually not connected with audio yet. There it goes. Give them a minute.
Okay. Can she hear me? Can you hear me? Hannah George is who, that's who we're looking for?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, was it your intention to sign up to speak on item 2A, which is matters not on the agenda, or did you want to speak on 4B and C?
Um, matters 4B and C, I believe.
4B and C? Okay, we'll put you back on the list for that. Are there any others, any other speakers, Patricia?
There are no other speakers.
All right, that concludes item 4A. For item 4B is planning commission and staff comments and inquiries, commissioners? No question. Yes, John?
I just want to thank the staff for not burying us this time and letting us have time to consider an item fully.
Okay.
They're here.
The other comments, yes, Craig?
Yeah, um, this is, this is for the legal department and not to take a lot of time today or, or put you on the spot, Patrick, but if we could get a report back sometime soon about a couple of questions, one being, what is the citation that says that the planning commission has no scope, scope to alter or improve a proposed project, such as we heard on the Westwood Beach project at the last time? I don't need to like a big discourse about it right now, just asking for the citation, where, where does it talk about the limits of our discretion? Cause I think at least some of us thought that was part of the job that we're here to do is to, you know, talk about what's wrong and what might need to be improved and so forth. And then secondly, why and how is it that when we asked Rob Duboe for a wave uprush study and a needs study for regarding traffic parking? How is it that he can say in the first case on the uprush that it was not needed when the staff report called it a structure right on the front page? Uh, and in the second case on the parking, he said he had a study, but we didn't get to see it. It wasn't in our staff report. So I, again, I'm not, you know, wanting to argue the substance right now, but just what is the statutory authority that says a project of that scope needn't be so justified by evidence or that we don't, we don't get to see the evidence? Okay. And this is apropos, but sort of anecdotal. I've never had a traffic accident in my life, but I had one last week when I was away in Yosemite. I was backing out of a diagonal space. I was already stopped and starting to make my forward progress to kind of loop around to, to pull out headway. And another guy glanced off the back of my bumper and my car was fine, but his was kind of totaled. So, um, I just thought it was, made me think we, we've seen over decades that the diagonal spaces have slowly disappeared from the main streets of USA. And I imagine there must be a reason for that regarding safety. And so I just, just sort of a, kind of a weirdly timed double check on, on why we just approved diagonal spaces. And then finally, uh, still trying to arrange with Adrian about story polls on the motel site. Uh, we had some 45 minutes of phone conversation pouring over the, the mats at each end, and I still find that the poles are seven feet too short in one place and 10 feet too short in another, and they don't go into the hill. Similarly, far enough, they're about nine feet too short into the hill. And, um, we have tried to arrange a meeting on site with Adrian and, but he's still waiting for a story poll design plan from the surveyor, which to me begs the question of how could they have certified the polls accuracy if they didn't have the plan in hand yet? And so I guess that's a question for Richard or if Adrian's here, you know, we, we, we're trying to get to the bottom because it seems like a big discrepancy. And, uh, and yet, um, nobody seems to want to get out there and actually get to the bottom of it, or I don't know if it, it just sort of seems that way at this point. So what, what say the Richard?
If you like, I could answer that now, or if it's the chair's wish, we could wait till the end.
Yeah, let me go through the rest of the speakers and then you can respond. Uh, anybody else who wishes to raise, yes, Dennis?
Since we're talking about Westwood Beach and the wall, I guess we probably all noticed and not really paid much attention since the oil spill in Huntington Beach, they have those exact same walls. They have them for a really long ways, all over the beach down there, and they've got openings, so tractors or whatever can get between them, so they run by each other like this, but it's open. So they got a lot of those walls down there, very long. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, that concludes the commissioner comments. Staff, who want to respond?
Certainly. Uh, so to Commissioner Hill's last point on the story polls is my understanding, I believe that Adrian had sent you the certification that the poles were placed correctly. And what's happening at this point, I believe, is they were going back and re-certifying them. And yes, that information was supposed to be to us, I want to say maybe a week or two weeks ago, and we are waiting on that. And then also though, I can definitely follow up because I believe they were willing to meet with anyone on site as well, members of the commission to answer any questions. So I can also make sure that happens. But my understanding was this was a, a recertification, a secondary look at it.
Nonetheless, there, there has been no drawn plan about how that, so it still begs the question of what they were certifying if they didn't have the plan. Anyway, if, if we're moving ahead, that's great. I just, it's been frustrating.
Okay, so let's move on. But there are no items on item three consent calendar. We're now at item four continued public hearings. Item 4A is continued to a date uncertain. So we're now at item 4B coastal development permit 14-073, and we'll hear items B and C together. So who's going to give us a staff report on these items?
That would be me.
Thompson.
Yes. Good evening, Chair Jennings and members of the planning commission. The item you have before you tonight is CDP numbers 14072 and 14073 for the projects located at 33386, 33390 and 33398 Pacific Coast Highways. For the purposes of this presentation, as we previously discussed, these items will be heard together. The planning commission continued the item to a date uncertain in March of 2018. Following the applicant pursued some redesign options that included the potential use of parking lifts. However, the fire department did not approve this design and the correspondence is included in the staff report. The item was further continued in April of 2020 in order for the applicant to pursue further additional redesign options, and that is the item that you're being heard tonight. Next slide, please. Here is the project site vicinity map. The subject park parcels are located on a vacant lot, rectangular in shape and are surrounded by existing residential development. The subject lots take access from Pacific Coast Highway along a private driveway that serves two other developed properties. The three lots are located to the north and those subject lots are currently developed with single family residences. Next slide, please. Here is the aerial photograph of the project site. As you can see, the parcel is characterized by a steep slope that means the LCP's definition of a coastal bluff. Next slide, please. Here's the site plan, which depicts the two project sites. Next slide, please. The scope of work for coastal development permit number 14072 includes, and this is for the project at 33398 Pacific Coast Highway, includes the construction of a 2,377 square foot, two-story, single-family residence and 448 square foot, two-car garage, a new OWTS and C wall, elevated parking and fire department turnaround platform, beachfront deck and side yard stairs, new index swimming pool, spa and associated pool equipment, outdoor bar, barbecue and fireplace, retaining walls, new in-deck planters and hardscaping, grading and a lot line adjustment and lot merger. Next slide, please. This project also includes the following discretionary requests, including variance number 1750 to allow for construction in excess of 18 feet, up to 43.25 feet in height. Variance number 1751 to allow for construction on slopes deeper than two and a half to one. Variance 18001 to allow portions of the building in excess of 18 feet in height to exceed the two-thirds, the area below 18 feet in height. Variance 18005 to allow construction on a coastal bluff. Next slide, please. Variance 1806 to allow for reduced side yard setback, to allow for access stairs and a connecting fire department turnaround between the subject property and the property addressed at 3386 PCH. And finally, variance number 18005 to allow for reduction of the required front yard setback from the required 30 feet, eight inches to 13 feet, four inches. Next slide, please. Here's shown the lot line adjustment. The green lines indicate the lot lines to be adjusted and the blue line indicates the new proposed property line. Next slide, please. Here's the elevation for the project at 33398 Pacific Coast Highway. As you can see, the total height is indicated by the blue arrow is at 43.25 feet. The previous project was proposed at 47 feet in height and the plans were revised to raise the lower finished floor to reduce the total height by 3.75 feet. Next slide, please. Here's a section through that property at 33398 PCH. Next slide, please. Now for the scope of work under for CDP number 14073, which is for 33386 PCH. And this includes a construction of a 2,376 square foot, two-story, single-family residence and 449 square foot, two-car garage, a new OWTS and C wall, elevated parking and fire department turnaround, beachfront deck and side yard stairs, a new index swimming pool, spa and associated equipment, also an outdoor bar, barbecue and fireplace, retaining walls, new in-deck landscaping and hardscaping and grading. Next slide, please. Additionally, this project also includes the following discretionary requests to allow for construction in excess of 18 feet up to 43.25 feet in height for the single-family residence, a variance to allow for construction on steep slopes, a variance to allow portions of the building in excess of 18 feet in height to exceed two-thirds, the area below 18 feet in height, a variance to allow construction on a coastal bluff. Next slide, please. A variance to allow a reduced side yard setback to allow access stairs and the connecting fire department turnaround between the subject property and the property addressed at 33398 PCH and a minor modification to allow the reduction of the required front yard setback from 30 feet, eight inches to 20 feet, nine inches. Next slide, please. Here's an elevation of the property located at 33398 PCH. Again, the property is shown at the total height of 43.25 feet. Next slide, please. Here's the proposed section through that property. Next slide, please. Here are the site story poll photographs for the project located at 33386 PCH as indicated by those yellow lines. Staff has requested that the applicant re-erect the story polls in order for the commission to resee some of the redesign options. And however, the applicant has declined to re-erect those story polls. Next slide, please. Here is further story polls for the project located at 33398 Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. And here are some additional story poll photos shown from the driveway and from the lower portions of the lot. Next slide, please. Next, these photographs are taken from neighboring homes. This one taken from 33368 Pacific Coast Highway. And these are shown to show the view blockage from various properties within the neighborhood. Next slide, please. Here's the photos from 33406 PCH. Next slide, please. And finally, here are the photos from 33418 Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. In summary, as detailed in the staff report, staff is recommending the denial of the project for the inability to make the variance findings for the height in excess of 18 feet and for the two-thirds calculation. Staff is recommending the adoption of resolutions 2106 and 2107, denying coastal development permits number 14072 and 14073. Staff and the project applicant team are available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Jessica. Uh, we've got a lot of people who want to speak on this. Uh, I think we ought to just open the public hearing. Questions can be reserved for when we're completed the public hearing, we're back at the commission table. The applicant team gets 30 minutes for the two, two projects. Uh, can you identify the members of the applicant team for me, Patricia?
I believe Don Schmitz will be speaking on behalf of the team.
Okay, no other speakers.
There were a few others, but I'll let him introduce them.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
That's fine.
Thank you. Are we doing disclosures now or later?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're quite right. Disclosures. Craig?
Unmute. Um, yeah, I, I've spoken with neighbor Lloyd Stamen several times. Once or twice in February and again once this past week. I once spoke with his advocate, Eric Roachan, um, didn't learn anything that's not elsewhere in the public record. I did watch the 2018 hearing, all two and a half hours of it. From that, I learned that both public works and the fire department confirmed that the access is too steep, period, being in, in excess of 20 degrees. At the time, staff proposed several potential fixes to reduce the number of variances, including the parking list and some suggestions about PVDs, but ignored the fact that the slope of the access is still inherently disqualifying. So I visited the site earlier this year, um, made a close examination of the one-to-one areas, made a measurement, walking it out with my foot measurement and by eyeball, so accurate within about 10% and found that the one-to-one area substantially more than stated in the reports. And not to mention, there's another big one-to-one area immediately above the driveway on the other owner's property, which would threaten this. And so based on, on that seemingly inconsistent slope data, I asked staff for the color-coded slope study. Didn't get it in February. I finally got it at 4:15 today and it's dated 2010, revised 2014. And so that sort of explained why it doesn't match the reality on the ground because there was a big slide in 2018 that created substantially more one-to-one area than is represented on that study. So if, if the other shoe drops, it just suggests that the net lot area is substantially less than what the, what we've been talking about. There, and that's it for disclosure. Thanks.
Thank you, John.
I was in the hearing in 2018, at which time I visited the property, nothing else.
Dennis?
Uh, went outside, Don Schmitz, uh, looked around and didn't learn anything different with some of the staff report.
David?
Same thing, visited the site, talked to Don, uh, didn't learn anything that isn't in the report.
Okay, I was fortunate enough to miss the 2018 hearing. And I met with Don Schmitz, but I did not go to the site and I did, there was nothing that we discussed that isn't in the staff report. All right, uh, back to the public hearing. What's got to Mr. Schmitz? For one half hour. Or as much as you wish, you know, you can reserve as much as you need for rebuttal. And you don't feel any obligation to use the entire 30 minutes.
Audio check, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, before you start the clock, I do want to alert you that Council Fred Gaines is, uh, signed up to speak. He will be speaking in rebuttal and we also have coastal engineer Reggie Brown, who is, is going to be speaking briefly during the presentation. I would like you to please make sure, if you could, Jessica, that I don't go any more past 20 minutes on the initial presentation so I can retain the remainder for rebuttal. So with that, if we could pull up my PowerPoint presentation, I would be grateful. So thank you, commissioners, Don Schmitz, on behalf of the applicants. Uh, next slide, please. I just want to point out something here. We've had something, this is our 11th scheduled hearing. Uh, we were in front of you in March 2018. We submitted the application in November of 2014. Took us three years to get to a hearing and after you heard us and sent us back to go meet with the fire department and Commissioner Hill is mistaken, neither public works nor the fire department were stating that the driveway was too steep with the proposed plans. But we went to the fire department with the suggestion, and there'll be more on this later, that we have car elevators. It's taken us this long to get back because we have tried everything, commissioners, everything. And to date, we still cannot get anything definitive in regards to what design modifications we can make to garner a recommendation of approval. Next slide, please. So the variance is required, there's five variances required or six, if you include the front yard setback. Next slide, please. And we have the variances in the staff report, the staff is recommending for three or four, the front yard setbacks also a variance. And the findings are in the report for approving those variances because there's literally no way to develop the property without the variances. Staff is recommending denial, denial for the two or the variances for height and the two-thirds ratio. And if you read the staff report carefully, they state they're unavoidable, but perhaps something could be done so we could avoid them a little bit less than what it is that we're proposing. Next slide, please. So the first variance is for construction on a coastal bluff. Next slide, please. There's absolutely no question that the entire lots are coastal bluff. It's impossible for us to develop without developing on a coastal bluff. Next slide, please. That is the quintessential example of a variance that should be approved. It's a pressure release valve if the strict application of the code would result in a taking. Next slide, please. And this is reflected in the staff report that the entire property consists of a coastal bluff slope. And through the analysis, they took a hard look at this and we just simply have no options. Next slide, please. Additionally, we have the, uh, the slope map and variance for construction on slopes of excess of two and a half to one. Next slide, please. It's simply impossible for us to develop anything on this property without developing on slopes deeper than two and a half to one. It's incontrovertible. And the staff report reflects that. There are no alternative locations for us to avoid this. Next slide, please. And there's a variance to allow for the reduced side yard setback. Next slide, please. And for the front yard setback, next slide. And these variances are for the hammerhead turnaround and for the fire department stairs that are required to go on both sides of the property. They are absolutely essential for public health and safety. We're not asking for these variances for more house or anything like that. It is so that the project comports with the fire department requirements. Next slide, please. And here are the findings in the staff report that the proposed residence is designed to be closer to the front property line in order to less, less visual impacts to the surrounding residences. There's also really good engineering reasons for this. And the staff report goes on to state, therefore, the proposed project, this front yard setback does not adversely affect the neighborhood character. Next slide, please. Which leaves the fourth variance for construction in excess of 24 feet in height. And this is where things get very interesting. The staff report on page 15 specifies that due to the steep slopes present on the site and the required fire department access, it is not possible to build a structure that is 24 feet high from adjacent grade and meets the requirements of the Los Angeles County Fire Department. And as is reflected in the staff report, commissioners, we cannot put this slab for the fire department turnaround any further down the slope because the driveway does in fact become too steep. More on that later. This is exactly where that slab must be so that we have the fire department turnaround. Next slide, please. And yes, the fire department has approved the access way and it has been surveyed several times and it does not exceed the maximum slope and it is appropriately designed hammerhead turnaround. And here is the approval from the fire department in April of 2019. Next slide, please. So given the constraints of the property, there is no flat area that could accommodate the residents regardless of the side and provide the required fire department access. Page six on both of the staff reports. Next slide, please. This is important because the staff acquiesces, that slab must be there. The coastal bluff slope covers the whole parcel and prevents the construction of an on-grade fire department turnaround. Page 20. Page twenty five of both of the staff reports. Next slide, please. Now, back in March, staff said that they believed it was possible to redesign the home to use parking lifts and a lower garage, which would lessen impacts to private views and lower the overall height of the structure. That's what happened to us back in March two thousand and eighteen. Next slide, please. So we went back and we tried and we didn't do so great. I met with everybody in the Fire Department, including Chief Jim Bailey. And he said not only no to the issue of having the lifts, he said we could not have any of the house underneath the Fire Department turnaround. We actually had to redesign the floor plans of the house. Next slide, please. And this is reflected in the staff report on page six in both reports. LA County Fire Department denied the request for the redesign and further stated no habitable area could be located under the Fire Department turnaround. Next slide, please. And here's the denial signed by Jackie Switzer. And you can see that Chief James Bailey is on there. I met with him personally in his offices down in the city commerce. Next slide, please. Denied due to operational safety, the turnaround area and firefighting area should not be placed on top of the protected premise. Next slide, please. That is what precipitated us having to modify. So we can't push the house any further back into the hillside because we cannot be underneath Fire Department turnaround. That is a hugely important point. So you can see, we also faithfully measured the height from existing natural grade or the bottom of the excavation. Next slide, please. Habitable area over twenty four feet is, is highlighted here in light blue and the garage, which we have a labeling area here, is in purple. Next slide. The zoning of this property is our problem. The city of Malibu zoned this property rural residential two. It's an inland designation. Next slide, please. Next slide. The LCP specifies that on non-beach front lot, that you will measure the height from natural or finished grade. Next slide. And so that is exactly what we've had to do here. Next slide, please. But these are beach lots. Next slide, please. Nobody can question that these are beach lots. Next slide. Now, the twenty four feet height measurement is because of the zoning, but we had to meet design criteria for a beachfront development. Next slide, please. You can see that we've got our septic system located underneath the house and you know Commissioners, you never see that anywhere except on the beach. You can see our advanced onsite wastewater treatment system and our leach field is located directly underneath the house. Next slide, please. And the Health Department approved this. Next slide, please. Applying municipal code section fifteen point four two point one four oh beachfront onsite wastewater treatment systems. And this is one of the things we have to do. We have to grade it down and we have to make sure the lowest level of the house is at least six feet above that septic system. That really hurts us. Next slide, please. Now, if we had the appropriate beach zoning on this, the height would be measured from the minimum floor elevation pursuant to the Coastal Engineers' report. Next slide, please. And as you can see here, we've got a wave up rush limit of twenty four point seven mean low low, a twenty four point five feet N A B D eighty eight. And if we had that twenty four foot height, which we have to accommodate because we have to have the bottom of our house set up higher, then the, the first two levels of this house would in fact comply with the height limitations. On one hand, we're penalized by the applicable codes that we have to have the bottom of the house at this elevation. And at the same time, we're then penalized in regards to how we measure the height, which is from the bottom of the excavation. That's just not fair. And that's one of the reasons why we're asking for the variance. Next slide, please. So the last variance to allow the two thirds ratio, the staff report on page six specifies that it was not possible to determine the allowable area above eighteen feet. Therefore, to address compliance with the two thirds rule of variances being processed. Now ruminate on that for a moment. It's not possible to determine the two thirds ratio because we start out at being over eighteen feet. Next slide, please. In fact, the staff report goes on to say, no calculation is possible. We don't know how to accommodate the two thirds ratio. Your staff doesn't know how to accommodate the two thirds ratio because the two thirds ratio is to be applied to inland development, not beachfront development that has an excavation, put a septic system under the house and then has a minimum floor elevation. And oh, by the way, also has on top of the house, a large concrete slab to meet the Fire Department standards. The two thirds ratio rule simply does not work. So we've asked for a variance. We've asked for relief. Your staff says, well, we're not going to recommend approval of that because although we ask, we ask, you can't meet the height and you can't meet the two thirds race, ratio. Perhaps you could meet it a little bit better than what you have. Well, we can't because we have to have that minimum floor elevation and we cannot put the house underneath the Fire Department turnaround. Next slide, please. So moving on to some other relevant issues here in regards to scenic visual resource protections. It goes on to say, there's no feasible location where we can build the houses where you won't see them from the beach, of course. Next slide, please. The staff report also accurately goes on to say, the proposed residences will not be visible from Pacific Coast Highway, so we can set that aside. Next slide. There are in fact, three primary view determinations from our neighbors for three, three, four, one, eight, four, oh, six and three, 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 six, eight, Pacific Coast Highway. Next slide, please. The important thing about this is that the slab that we must build for the Fire Department turnaround is the main impact. Next slide, please. As you can see, this is for three, three, four, oh, six, the slab itself is, is the main thing where the inevitable, unavoidable view blockage will occur. Changes or modifications to the house, which is all underneath the slab, will not be visible to our three neighbors. And we must have that slab no matter what. No matter what type of house that we propose here, no matter what size houses they are, no matter how we configure them, we must have the slab. Oh, and by the way, staff told us just a couple of weeks before the hearing, they wanted us to restore pole the site. It would have been another extensive delay. We've had seven years we've been at this and last time we had story poll, the neighbors complained bitterly and we were told by the planning director, they were complaining bitterly, they wanted the poles taken down. And we were told by the previous planning director, it was Bonnie Blue, that if we photo documented everything, we would not have to incur the expense of putting those poles back up again. But as you can see, we have the pictures of the poles and you can see that the slab, which is going to happen no matter what house is reviewed and ultimately approved here, that the slab is the main visual impacts to our neighbors' primary view. We're not being cavalier about their views. There's just nothing that we can do about it. Next slide, please. And so you can see, this is the last neighbor up coast through three, four, one, eight, and you can see the slab there. And you understand the concept of what I've been discussing with you in regards to the house being below the slab. Next slide, please. So the Fire Department slab in the case on, this is a three dimensional model that was done by the architect. This is what you will see from the beach with the house wrapped around it and in it. And, and this is again, absolutely unavoidable. We must have the slab, we must have the case on to support it. It's just basic engineering and the Fire Department access code. Next slide, please. What about the lifts? Well, City Councilmember Mikey Pearson said, for quite a few years, I've been uncomfortable on car lifts. I don't think it's a path we want our city to go down. This is for the recent hotel project, which you referred to as Norm Haney's Hotel. Next slide, please. And City Councilmember Steve Hearn said, yeah, I agree with Mikey that the car lifts, I don't think they're a good idea. My reason is that they run on electricity. If we have a fire and the electricity goes out, how do you get your car down? He was, he was speaking about the hotel again. Who's going to get it down? Going to get people stuck in hotel and not being able to get out. And I don't think that that's a good thing to have happen. So from a safety perspective, I don't think car lifts in Malibu are a good idea. Looks like the council members concur with the Fire Department in the issue as it pertains to the lifts. Next slide, please. And then there was a, a statement by Councilmember Bruce Silverstein. I'm going to join Mikey and Steve in being opposed to eliminating the restriction and or prohibition against car lifts. As Jefferson Wagner said, I think correctly, our planning Commissioners, you guys understand the details, the facts of these things better than, than we do, and they rejected it. You rejected the car lifts on the hotel and the council overwhelmingly concurred with your determination in regards to that. And if it was unsafe there, it's unsafe here. The Fire Department believes that to be the case. We're stuck. Next slide, please. But what we can do and what we have done is a project redesigned to the best of our abilities. Now, two thousand and eighteen, the rendering on the left hand side is what was in front of you. Now, an important point. You can see that the road continues to go on past the existing road, goes on down past to the left. And we're actually bridging out from our easement onto that concrete slab where our hammerhead turnaround is. And we had standard garages, two car garages, and we had these small buildings for the elevator shaft and for the stairwell. And we've done a redesign on that. We're, we're absolutely obligated to have the concrete slab Commissioners. But we did the best that we could. Next slide, please. Because we wanted to address to the best of our abilities, a minimization of the visual impacts for what is on top of the slab. All the railings are glass. The, the garages have been shrunk down to an absolute minimum. They're an absolute minimum in, in height. I think they're nine feet in height. Additionally, you can see the entrance to the stairwell and the elevator have now been replaced with glass walls to make them transparent. It's, it's our best faith effort to try and minimize the visual impacts to our neighbors' primary views. We can't do anything about the concrete slab because we have to have that for the Fire Department turnaround. But you can see, we have no house, nothing up on that upper area except the place to park and get into the house and for the Fire Department to turn around. Next slide, please. So with that, I have just a couple of minutes left before we hit that twenty minutes. I would like you to please, if you can stop the clock for a second and if you could ask Reggie Brown to unmute and speak to the Commissioners in regards to, it's like we're still, yes, speak towards what was done in regards to the wave up brush study. Commissioners, there was a letter from the Coastal Commission pertaining to sea, sea level rise and I would ask Mr. Brown to speak to you, please.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Commissioners and Planning Director Malika. My, my name is Reg Brown, Principal of Pacific Engineering Group. And we had originally had this floor lower and then because we originally did this design in two thousand and fifteen, two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen. And I guess it's taken this long to get to this point, but we have since used the sea level rise of six point two eight feet that the Coastal Commission is been making us use on new, new construction for new homes corresponds to that seventy five year two thousand and, two thousand and, year two thousand and ninety six. And using the six point two eight foot sea level rise, we get an uprush limit at elevation twenty eight point six, which is below the finished floor elevation of twenty nine point two five for the project that you have in front of you today. So that's, that's where we are on this. And I'd like to relinquish my time to Mr. Schmitz again.
Don, can you hear me? Yes, I am, let's see, it looks like we've got eleven, a little over eleven minutes left.
Right.
I think we're good. We'll just retain that for rebuttal. Chair Jennings, available for any questions that you have now. I'd ask your staff to keep the presentation where we stopped it because when I come back, I'll probably have some additional slides for you. So let's, let's keep it for rebuttal.
Okay, fine. So Patricia?
Yes, we, yes, we have approximately fourteen public speakers. We'll start with Jerry Jacob, followed by David Rosen, followed by Charles Hagan. So I'm going to start with Jerry Jacob and you would like to grant them six minutes?
Six minutes, yes.
Okay, there's going to be a slight lag time in adjusting the timer for each person, so please stand by one moment.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Commissioners?
Yes, we can.
One moment, Jerry.
Okay.
We're going to wait for the timer on the screen to appear. There's a bit of a lag time. Okay, there you go, Jerry. Jerry, if you'd like to begin.
Yeah, so I'm a, a neighbor of this proposed project and I'm here to, tonight to encourage the Commissioners to deny this project. I think there's way too many variances. And I think everybody needs to think about what are variances for? And if you approve a project that needs six variances, I think that sets a precedent for future development in Malibu. And variances are there for a reason. And this is way too many. If there was one, maybe two, I could maybe understand that. But six is, is way too many. My other concern is that of the steepness of the driveway. I have visited the site with a, a smart level and I was hoping to be able to show you this tonight. But I have measurements of twenty eight point six, twenty seven point five percent, all the way up to, there's one measurement of thirty three point eight degrees. I have had conversations with Jackie Switzer at the Fire Department and she indicated to me that several years ago, there was a document from an engineer stating the maximum steepness of this driveway was nineteen point nine percent. Interesting that that's nineteen point nine when the rule is fifteen and the Fire Department is known to accept twenty at times. She also has assured me that if this project is approved one day, that the fire, that the developers need to go back to the Fire Department and get this approved as presented. Because it's not. And at that time, they have agreed to come out and meet me. And I can show them the, the really, the, the true numbers of this driveway. Because they are definitely misrepresented. They're not true. And it's, you know, Craig Hill, I thought that was great that you came out and said that the story poll dimensions weren't accurate. I think you need to come out and meet me and I'll show you that the, the degrees of steepness of this driveway are clearly misrepresented. And just because an engineer put down a number, it doesn't mean that it's accurate. It's, it's in no way any anything close to what is the steepness of this driveway. And I'd like to give the rest of my time to the attorney representing Charles Hagan.
I'm sorry, Jerry, we can't really do that, but, but he can have his six minutes as well, so.
Okay, so I just want to urge the, you know, this, this is a really nice beach. No homes have been built on this beach in many, many years. It's a, they're bluff lots. The California Coastal Commission hasn't allowed for development on bluff lots. And I truly believe that it, it, it isn't what the neighbors want. I, I didn't hear Schmitz talk about the views that are being blocked of the neighbors. I didn't hear anything about that except that, oh, it's required by the Fire Department, so it's okay to block views. And it's not okay. Not okay at all. What's, what's clear to me is what these developers are trying to do is put a square peg in a round hole. Everything you hear Schmitz say, it's, it doesn't work, it doesn't work, it doesn't work, it does not work. He's right. Because it doesn't belong here. None of the neighbors want it. And what they don't show, I find is interesting, is several years ago, there was a photo on the website of the architect showing exactly how this impacts the view and the beach areas in front of this property. If you go to their website in the last two years, the photos of the elevations of these homes have been removed. However, I have a picture of it, but I can't show it to you. It does not fit in the neighborhood. It, it does not fit at all. It does not fit at all. Nobody wants it, and I urge you to deny this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Patricia?
Our next speaker is David Rosen. One moment, I'm going to update the clock. David Rosen, are you ready to speak?
I am, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we've got you.
All right, thank you. My name is David Rosen. I'm the lawyer for Lloyd Saitman, who's the owner of three-three-four-zero-six PCH, which is directly above the proposed development. I have five big points I want to make. The first one is big picture, and I think it's worth taking a step back and looking at what we have here. And what we have is an application filed by a developer in the guise of a single-purpose LLC. And the one thing we know for sure is that when all this is done, that LLC is going to disappear. And whatever bad things happen are going to be left for other people to deal with. And I thought it was ironic that in some of Mr. Schmidt's pictures in his presentation, you see the bluff covered in Visqueen from a slide that happened back in two thousand and eighteen. They're going to be gone when problems develop down the road. You have a developer who's motivated solely by profit. This isn't about bettering the community, it's about making money. You have a developer that is essentially trying to game the system by having, by buying dead unusable land for pennies on the dollar and now trying to turn it into multi-million dollar homes. You have a developer that is now asking this commission to bend over backwards to allow development that doesn't even come close to complying with the existing rules. Five or six variances, and these variances were not close. These are, you know, it's hard to even call it a variance when you're so varying from the law. And what I think can only be described as a showing of abject greed, what they're proposing is way too large for the space. Mr. Schmidt said they've tried everything. Well, did they try making something smaller? Put a little something down on the beach. You bought the property, fine. There's certainly something you can build down there. But what they're trying to do is push the limits as far as they possibly can, and they're pushing it well beyond what are acceptable limits. And with that background, my second point is there's nothing unfair about denying this application. There is no God-given right to build on this land. And that's particularly true, given that this developer bought this land knowing full well that it may not be able to use the land. And I submitted, I made a written submission last week that included some attachments. And one of the attachments, it was attachment A, is an internal email from one-eighty PCH where they specifically acknowledged this fact. It says, quote, "They did not know if anyone could ever do anything with it because of the geological and the other problems with the easements." "So we bought a distressed deal that had a lot of problems, and the price reflects this." Yeah, and these are the problems we're dealing with today. They don't have a right to get past the fact that they bought a land that isn't suitable for building. I mean, essentially what we're doing is we're weighing the interests of a developer versus the interests of the existing homeowners that have been living there for a long time and are trying to protect their views and protect the land, frankly, from what might happen if this development goes forward. And I don't understand why in this situation there would be any doubt that the interests of the homeowners should come first. The third thing I want to talk about is that Mr. Schmidt's made some reference to this being a taking. California law is clear that in order to constitute a taking, there must be, quote, "complete destruction of the economical viable use of the property," end quote. Clearly, there has been no destruction of the economic use of this property. So long as there is any viable use of the property, there hasn't been a taking. Here, there are other alternate uses. If the developer stops shooting for the moon and tries to be reasonable and come up with something that works, there's use for the property. You know, I'll note, Mr. Saitman is a contractor and he supports development. If there's something reasonable, the community might get behind it. The fourth thing I want to, I want to talk about is the impact on the ocean views. And look, I don't have to say much about this because I think it's self-evident. The mere fact that they're refusing to put up story poles so that the commissioners can see exactly what the impact of this is, I think is, tells a lot. You know, I'm not a contractor, but I'm developing, I'm guessing the purpose of story poles is to tell the story of how it impacts the views. And the refusal to put up story poles tells its own story. And the story is that this is not going to fare well to the neighbors who enjoy their ocean views. The last point I want to make has to do with the road. One of the documents we submitted is a, is a study done by us that shows the road is steeper. We presented this to the other side. They've done nothing about it. We also presented the commissioners with an internal memo where one-eighty PCH literally acknowledges that in places, the road is more than twenty percent grade, yet they still went to the fire department and had them sign off on a survey that is wrong. This is developer versus homeowners, and the homeowners should win this battle. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's next, Patricia?
Next, we have Charles Hagan. I don't see him in the Zoom meeting. Charles, if you would like to raise your hand in the Zoom meeting, if you're in the room, we can unmute you.
Somebody named Tyler's hand is.
Yeah, yes, this is Charles Hagan, my assistant. He put his name.
Okay. One second, let me increase the time. It's going to be a slight lag time.
Do I get six minutes?
I do. Five minutes and fifty-eight seconds now.
You got it, okay. So, good evening, commissioners and staff. My name is Charles Hagan. I live at three-three-four-zero-eight Pacific Coast Highway and three-three-six-eight Pacific Coast Highway. I've been a resident of Malibu for more than fifty years. There are a number of issues I'd like to address regarding the proposal in front of you tonight. First is my pedestrian easement from my house to the beach. In two thousand and eight, I was involved in a lawsuit in the Superior Court of California with the previous owner of the subject property, Zen Partners. The outcome of that lawsuit was, among other things, that I was granted a pedestrian easement from my house to the beach. The plan you have in front of you tonight and are being asked to approve would basically cancel my rights under that recorded agreement. My attorney, Bill Shiber, will address the issue separately. I have lived next to the subject property for at least forty years and very familiar with the development. Zen Partners, who were the previous developers of the property, which consisted of six parcels, had planned to remodel the existing house at the top of the bluff and then develop the lower lots. Their plan was to create a fire department turnaround on the two vacant lots adjacent to the house, regrade and reconstruct the road to the lower parcels that would meet building and fire department standards as the road had been red flagged as substandard. The work was not completed, and the property fell into foreclosure. The lender, East West Bank, ultimately foreclosed on the property. East West Bank then sold the house and the two adjoining lots where the fire department turnaround had been planned to go for the lower lots to the present owner, Lloyd Saitman. East West Bank then sold the three lots to a new developer who, after more than a year of developing plans and working with the billing and fire department, came to the conclusion that the site was not developable, particularly because the lots for the fire department turnaround had been sold. The bank then took the lower lots back, re-marketed them, and sold them to the present owner, Richard Weintraub, also known as one-eighty PCH. Weintraub, being an experienced Malibu developer, was surely aware of the issues at hand. But it appears he felt he could persuade the planning commission to approve this plan with seven, six variances, cancel an existing recorded pedestrian easement, and regrade and reconstruct the neighbor's private road. Tonight, you are being asked to approve a plan with no less than six variances, including two forty-three-foot-tall buildings adjacent to the beach. Such an approval would establish a dangerous precedent for future projects, where developers would buy unvaluable parcels and then persuade billing department and planning commissions to grant them multiple variances so they can develop sites which are clearly contrary to the standards created by the coastal commission and adopted by the city of Malibu. I would ask the commission to deny the application in front of you tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next?
Next, we have Tyler Cruz there, if he still wants to speak.
Can you find him?
Yes, yeah, I'm not going to speak to him. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. One moment. Next, we have Diana Magania-Hagan.
Okay.
Would she like to speak?
Okay, I will pass. Thank you.
Thank you. One moment. Next, we have Paula Yankopoulos.
Yes, I'm here.
You ready to speak, Paula?
Yes, I'm here. I'm trying to be here. Hello?
Can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
Okay, we can hear you. You're ready to go.
Yes. My name is Paula Yankopoulos. My husband and I own the property adjacent to the lots in question. We're at three-three-four-one-eight. And it will be our view that is highly impacted by the slab for the fire department. I have read the document prepared by the city planner. I think it's ingenuous and a bit insulting to compare the right of this property owner to enjoy his properties with the same privilege that the neighboring property owners enjoy. The proposed two houses have been pictured on the owner's website with the implication that they'll be in time put on the market. There's been no indication that the owner intends to reside in either one of the houses. It's hard to believe that he didn't know when he purchased the lots that they were non-conforming and unbuildable and would require a number of variances. The owner is clearly exploiting the loophole that allows a house to be built on a legal lot, irregardless of the lot size, the inappropriateness of the site, or whether it will have a damaging effect on the environment or the immediate neighborhood. I've always thought that the purpose of the local coastal plan is to protect the natural environment. It appears that in this instance, the rules are being jettisoned. Rules such as construction of privately-owned structures on a bluff face is prohibited or at the coastal edict, new development shall neither create or contribute to erosion, geologic instability, or destruction of the site and surrounding area. These are all being set aside. The argument seems to be that the owner needs variances to build his two houses on a steep bluff bluff face because there's no alternative feasible building site on any of the three lots. My question is this: Is it an immutable right for an owner to build a house on a legal lot which is unsuitable for any building? Does this right override other considerations, in particular the probability that it will do irrevocable damage to the environment? The two houses being proposed will spread wall-to-wall across the three lots and totally obliterate a fragile natural bluff area. I am perplexed that the city planners have designated the houses as qualifying for a sequoia categorical exemption, since the two houses will clearly do major damage to the bluff environment. What is new in the present proposal is the developer's office offer to merge the three lots into two. It seems to me that a more desirable alternative plan would be to create a single lot, a revised project on a single decent-sized lot, one which adheres to the Malibu LCP rules, would remove and at least mitigate the adverse effects on the bluff environment and also on our view of the ocean. This would be a more acceptable solution for the neighbors. I urge you to cut this project down to a proper size and place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Alex Yankopoulos, please.
Hold it just a second, Alex.
Hold on, let me get the sound. We got reverb.
Sounds better. You're ready to go now. Can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you.
Okay.
All right. My name is Alex Yankopoulos. First off, I'd like to say I appreciate everybody bringing up that, about the slope of the driveway. I noticed that in the past, that when I had walked it, some of the spots were at a one-to-one grade on the actual driveway. I really felt that the twenty percent that was on the plan was just a clear deception. And anyway, so I'm a resident at three-three-four-one-eight PCH in the property to the west of the two proposed buildings. I'm against allowing the merger of the two properties and the variances that would enable the developer to construct these homes in excess of eighteen feet in height because the structures would clearly block our view of the ocean that has been established by our view determination. I first want to point out that I believe you see no support from the surrounding neighbors and community for this project. These are speculation homes clearly designed to maximize square footage and their height in order to facilitate ocean views, maximize retail value and resale. They are a monstrosity and out of character with the surrounding residences and a not welcome addition to the community and its longtime residents. It will present an eyesore for the surrounding residents and block the view of the ocean. The proposed building will tower seventy-two feet above anyone standing on the beach in front of it and dwarf them. The buildings do not integrate with the existing homes and are distinct because they are built in the middle of the bluff compared to the neighboring homes which are set back. The two homes are being proposed with reduced side yard setbacks that effectively create one large six-thousand-foot wall of home and give more of an appearance of a hotel than two distinct houses. And you can see that if you look at the front view of that, that they had on their website. They will effectively cover every inch of the bluff it's being built upon, and they're being built in a location where neighbors would be prohibited from even placing a garden shed in a similar location on their own property. These three lots were designated a geologic hazard area by the coastal commission in December nineteen ninety-nine. Then they were retroactively given, when they were retroactively given permits for an illegal seawall that was, and at that time stipulated there was going to be no further construction because the bluff was built on a fragile area and designated a geological hazard restricted area. While this designation was removed by a judge in two thousand and three, it does not change or negate the opinion of the coastal commission that these lots are on an ecologically sensitive area, and the proposed construction will obliterate this fragile ecosystem. While I support a property owner's rights to build on their lot, I believe they should conform to the same rules that all existing neighbors abide by. I do not believe the council should modify the three existing lots into two lots if they do not conform to existing standards, when an alternate merger of the three lots into a single parcel would decrease the scope and need for variances. By merging their properties into a single lot, only a fire turnaround would be needed to be constructed at the top of the property over uninhabitable areas. The additional space would allow garage parking to be placed underground so as to reduce the structure height and not exceed the current height of the road. A modest home less than eighteen feet in height could be placed below the level of the road and not obstruct the neighbors' views. Alternately, the developer always could draw up plans for three distinct houses down there, and I believe three tiny homes would conform to the current height. and I believe three tiny homes would conform to the current height and setback restrictions. You cannot look at these building plans and see a project that has been scaled to try and minimize the use of variances and impact on the neighborhoods. In actuality, it seems that the developer used the non-conformity of his lots to increase the width, height, and square footage. I believe the challenges the developer faces getting fire access is being used to bloat this project, with the result that these three tiny lots are being entirely covered by the proposed two houses and damaging the neighborhood and their surrounding properties. Please deny the request for variances on these properties and ask for a proposal that minimizes variances, does not block other residences' views, is not an eyesore, and out of character with the surrounding structures. Please vote against this project and require the developer to merge the three projects into one lot, or the three lots into one, and to submit before submitting future building plans. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker, James George.
Okay, George.
Sorry, I'm gonna go through my wife's computer. I've got some feedback on it.
Okay.
Janice George.
Mute all the devices, mute all the devices in the room except one.
Okay. Patricia, let's go to the next speaker. We'll come back to Mr. George.
Okay, one second. Next we have Lloyd Saintman.
Let's take Mr. Saban.
Yeah, I'm not speaking.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Next we have Hadley George.
Okay.
I'm not speaking either. I'm ceding my minutes to James George.
Okay, you're not speaking.
Next speaker, we have Davis Mattson.
Mr. Mattson?
I don't see them in the meeting. Do you?
I do not.
Let's pass him. If he shows up, we'll come back to him. How about, how about James George? Has he, uh, got his feedback problem solved yet?
Let's, uh, let's skip to Janice George. Janice George.
All right, we'll go. We'll go to Janice George then, all right?
Thank you.
Ms. George?
Trying, you're not, I'm not, I'm getting unmuted.
You are, you are unmuted.
Okay, would you like, James would like to go first, and he is right next to me, and I don't get feedback on my computer, so.
All right, that's fine. If you would like to speak and take your, using your name, that's fine.
He's gonna use my name, but I, I'm not ceding my time. He's just.
I got it. I got it.
Okay, James.
Hello everyone, can you hear me? Sorry for the, the issues.
No problem.
Thank you commissioners for allowing us to speak. I am against this proposal. I've been watching this go on for probably the better part of five or six years. I do concur with, with Jerry that when 180 PCH bought the lots, they knew they were unbuildable. And we are now here, years later, trying to deal with the blatant disregard for neighbors' views, their easements, the beach, the bluff, and basically just blatant greed and, and a profit motive. We've been, I've been reading the report, which is about seventy pages long between the two residences, the staff report. And I, I have seen multiple times staff referring to the fact that the developer was asked multiple times to change the height and the mass above eighteen feet and has refused to do so. So when Mr. Schmidt gets on and says, well, we have no other alternative. They were given an alternative in twenty eighteen to reduce the size of the structure so it has less impact on the neighbors' existing rights and their privileges, as well as the bluff and the beach, which I think is, is going to be dramatically affected. It's kind of like putting ten pounds of easements into a two-pound waiver bag. It just doesn't fit. You're trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. The report cites the height issue. It's forty-three and a half feet, which is well above the allowable grade, out of variance and variance eighteen dash zero zero two. And the staff report has cited that and has cited that as, as a reason for denial. They've also cited variance eighteen dash zero zero four, which is the two-thirds an area above eighteen feet. That alone is enough to deny this. This doesn't even take into account the other four easements or variants, excuse me, for the steepness of the road. Variance request eighteen dash zero zero three and the stability of the bluff. Variance request eighteen dash zero zero eight, which are far from settled, as we've heard from the other speakers on this, on this call. I would say that from our perspective, we have been owners for about seventeen years. We have two deeded easements, one mechanical easement and one pedestrian easement that will be severely affected by, by this project. We have seen from the website that, that keeps going up and keeps coming down, that our, our access is going to be very, very much in doubt as we potentially cantilever over a bluff with steps. My wife and I are in our sixties, and this is not the same access that we currently have. And we also have an impediment on our blue water views, which these story poles would actually very much show if, if they were allowed to go back up. Those story poles stayed up there for months. There were a problem with the view. The neighbors had a problem with the views at that point, and they still have a problem with those views. But yet this is, this seems to be, even in the staff report, disregarded. The staff report cites multiple times findings of one, two, three, four, eight, and nine that do not pass muster in terms of these variances and the rights of the, the adjoining homeowners. This just seems to have every, every aspect of it that is is unacceptable to both staff and the neighbors, and really constitutes a special privilege imbued upon 180 PCH. And this is something that Mr. Schmitz, you know, refuses to acknowledge. He also refused to acknowledge that they, they knew, and as a sophisticated developer, when they bought the, the lots, that these lots were undevelopable for a variety of reasons that we're talking about tonight. I would highly urge a denial of this, even on the basis of the two variances that have been denied by the staff report and that have not, the other four have not been conceded vis-à-vis the staff report if, if those were found to be given waivers. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. George. Janice, did Janice George speak, or she, or, no, we're waiting here.
I'm here. I'll speak.
Let's hear from you.
One second. There we go. You may begin, Janice.
Like my husband said, we purchased the property in two thousand and three, and I wanted to give a little history of the property, which has been given by a couple other people already, so I really don't need to go so much into that. But, um, a lot of these lots, this, this property was developed, I believe, in nineteen twenty-nine, and they were large, one and a half to two-acre lots, and some of the people are still on one house, one small house on these sized lots in this neighborhood. That's what this started out to be. The, the area where this, they want to build was chopped up later, after it was acquired by the Higgins. He wanted to develop his land to make some money, and he had one house on there. And he chopped up the lots. It was one lot, and he got these lot designations, and they've gone back and forth, and he was told years and years and years ago, he couldn't develop those front lots. So I don't know why this is even an issue and why this guy's, these people, a 180 PCH, is even being heard at this point that he wasn't allowed to develop them. Then the coastal commission said it was unstable and not developable in two thousand. A judge changed it in two thousand and three. Then it was bought by Zen. They went to bankruptcy because they couldn't develop this land. They knew it wasn't developable. And then the bank took it back and sold it to the Churnings, and they had a clause in their sale that they would purchase it and for two years try to see what they could do, and if they couldn't, they would give it back, and that's exactly what happened. And they had some means behind them. They owned Panda Express. So they looked and looked for two years and realized this was not developable, and they gave it back to the bank. Then the bank put it back up for sale. And, and Mr. Weintraub purchased it because he figures he can get anything done in Malibu, and that's why he purchased it. This project has no business on that slope. That slope is unstable, and it's, it's a monstrosity. This, those two homes will cantilever so far over the beach. It's not just gonna block the view of the people that live there above that and their blue water, white water, whatever. It is gonna block the beach, period. Nobody's gonna be able to get from one side of the beach to the other side. There's not gonna be a nice, long walk along the beach. You're gonna have to walk and stop. You're not gonna get, be able to get around or under this massive caissons and swimming pool and equipment that will be dropped almost to the beach, and when the tide's in, forget it. You're not getting by. There's no way. And anybody on the beach, as they want to look for a long view down the beach, what are they gonna see? This massive piece of whatever, this building that looks like it should be in a city, not in, on the beach, sticking out further than anything on that beach sticks out. And for us, we have an easement down to the beach. We have a deeded easement to walk down to that beach. How are we gonna get down there? Right now, we can walk down the road, and if we had a wheelchair, we're in, like you said, in our sixties, or a walker or something, we could get down there, but I don't see steps for us. I don't even see in the conversation or any of this documentation about the easement for the people that have a deeded easement over this property. There's no, there's nothing about that. And how am I gonna get down the steps? That's not even talking about a mechanical easement. We certainly can't drive anything down the steps, but the steps aren't even being talked about as an easement for us and Charles Hagan, who has the property next to ours, and he has an easement. So I'm, I'm just come back to, you know, blocked views. All these people have cited everything that you could possibly think of. I'm just coming at this from a rational point of view. What are we doing here? What are we doing here? Really, what are we doing here? What is the purpose of this? Where are we trying to go? What is the end game? Who's end game? What are we looking at here? Who are we trying to, to help and who are we trying to hurt? Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Patricia?
Next speaker, we have Bill Shiper.
Okay.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, yes. Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. I do appreciate your time and attention. Obviously, this is a difficult process. It's been in front of you numerous times, and these decisions are always difficult ones. I, I'm an attorney. My name is Bill Shiber. I'm with the law firm of Miller Star Regalia, and I represent Charles Hagan, who you've heard from, and he owns the property at three, three, four, oh, eight Pacific Coast Highway. And he has an easement to go down to the beach through this proposed development, and I'll talk about that in a second. I think what has resonated most for me in terms of what I've heard is that this truly is an effort to put a square peg in a round hole. Our firm helps people develop property all the time. It's, it's a big part of what we do, and it's a good thing, and it's good for communities, and it's good for the state, but the right to development is not unlimited. There's a need to protect communities. There's a need to protect neighbors. There's a need to acknowledge and protect legal rights that others have in property, and all of those things, I think, are something that the planning commission needs to consider here. Are my clients' easements, and there's several others who you've heard from who have similar easement rights, provide access to, provides access to the beach. The driveway there was approved by the coastal commission. It was created actually in two thousand and eight in connection with a lawsuit and that was resolved with the oversight of the Los Angeles Superior Court, and that court still retains jurisdiction over the settlement and over the easement. And what the easement document says is that it can't be moved without the consent of the easement holders. And that consent has never been obtained in this case. And I think probably what's most galling to my client is that before such a request is made to move or impact the easement, there needs to be notice provided, and there needs to be plans provided as to exactly what's gonna happen to the easement, and if there's a proposed relocation, where it's gonna be relocated. And none of that was done here. There was no notice provided. The applicant proceeded as if essentially my client had no rights whatsoever. And I think that's just consistent with this idea that we're entitled to build whatever we want to build on this property, however inappropriate it is for the site, and however inappropriate it is for the community. So that's a problem. It's a legal problem that our client has a legal interest in this land. It's an easement. And according to the Malibu code, the municipal code actually, and I would cite seventeen point zero four point one five zero, the consent of somebody with that type of interest is required when a development like this is submitted to you for review and approval. And that consent has never been obtained. And my client does not agree to have their easement taken away and does not agree to losing their rights to use that easement to access the beach. There, there are a couple of findings that need to be made to support this application, which can't be made here. And one of those findings is that the development doesn't impact the public's right to access the beach. And that finding clearly can't be made because this impacts a lot of people's ability to access the beach, as you've heard. Another finding is that the proposed development doesn't impact neighboring properties in a negative way. And again, as you've heard today, this proposed development clearly does impact neighboring properties, given its size, given its scale, given its complexity. It's simply not appropriate for this site. There are alternatives available to the applicant. This is not the only way to develop this site, and the, the applicant is not entitled to do whatever they want to do on the site. They need to come up with a development that is appropriate for this site. So what I am asking the planning commission to do is first of all, to deny this application. It's clearly inappropriate. It's clearly opposed by those who've spoken, and a lot of people who haven't spoken. It'll make money for the applicant, but that's about it. It's gonna leave Malibu with a blight and an eyesore to deal with. And in the event that the planning commission either now or And in the event that the Planning Commission either now or at any time in the future is inclined to approve such a development, we'd request that you specifically require that the applicant obtain the consent of those who've got an easement over their property and whose easements are going to be impacted by the development to consent. So that there's a meaningful dialogue and process whereby people's rights are not simply trampled on. So with those comments, again, I appreciate the Planning Commission's attention. I appreciate your hard work and staff's hard work. And I would encourage you to go along with staff's, I think, common sense, but also very legally sound recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Hannah George. Hannah, if you're in the Zoom room, if you could please raise your hand. I don't see her. Let's go ahead and skip to our next speaker. We have Ronald Stein.
All right.
Let's see. Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you. We can hear you, yes.
Yes, thank you very much. I'd like to. I am the property owner, two doors east of the applicant. I am opposed to the project. I think basically that it's a a Rube Goldberg approach to building a residence that cannot fit on this lot. It's basically a monstrosity and eyesore. And obstructive views of the adjoining neighbors. I urge the Commission to go along with the staff report and deny this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How about Hannah George? Did we find her?
Let's see. We also have Davis Mattson.
Okay.
Davis, if you're available, can you please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting? This is the second time. Okay. Last time, Hannah George, if you're in the meeting, can you please raise your hand? And we will unmute you.
I'd suggest that if some people aren't familiar with using Zoom a lot, they might think raise your hand means actually raise your hand and the camera might see them or something, maybe. Describe the, the button. The hand button, however that works.
Thank you, Commissioner Hill. To the speakers, if you go to the reactions icon at the bottom of your screen, you could select the hand. If you could please select the hand. Let's do this. Let's, um, let's end our public speakers, if that's okay, Chair.
Okay.
That will conclude.
We will, we will close the public hearing. And we will return. Oh, no, it doesn't close the public hearing. closes those portions of the public other than the applicant. The applicant has 11 minutes and 39 seconds remaining. Mr. Schmitz.
Yes, before you start the clock, if you would please cut me off at six minutes and I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Gaines to proceed. And before we start, if you would put us back on to slide 41 of my presentation. So, okay, there was a lot of testimony here, people saying that, wow, they, they could design this, doing it a different way. Well, no, we can't. Next slide, please. No matter what we do, if we have one house on each lot, three homes, and yes, somebody asks is that an immutable right? It is. That's called Lucas for South Carolina Coastal Council. There's a legal right to build a house on a legal lot. And these are legal lots. No matter what, we will need a variance for construction on coastal block. Next slide. No matter what, we will need a variance for construction on the steeper slopes. No matter what. Next slide, please. This is not pounding in a square peg into a round hole. This is an application of the code, which simply does not work. And the variance for the setbacks, front and side yard, that's for the fire department safety purposes. Next slide, please. A variance for construction in excess of the height limitations. First of all, we've got the code constraints. But second of all, no matter what, as reflected in the staff report, we must have the concrete slab for the fire department turnaround. No matter what, the bottom of the house must be above the maximum wave breaking height. We have to work around those constraints. Next slide, please. So if we did have the beachfront limitations on it that we're supposed to have, we would actually be okay in regards to the height for the vast majority of this home. Next slide, please. And so the variance in regards to the two-thirds ratio, if, if folks can figure out a way that we comply with the height and in a way that works and can comply with the two-thirds ratio, trot it out. It doesn't work in, in the, the repeated testimony about the greed. The greed to build a 2,300 square foot house, that's not greedy. In fact, that's about the size of our neighbors' homes. Next slide, please. And it is consistent with the code for the total development. We can't meet the calculations on the two-thirds ratio. It's impossible. Next slide, because this should be a beach zone, not an inland area. But the one that just flummoxes me the most is all the testimony about misrepresentation for the fire department percentages of slope. These are the actual plans that show the 20% slope. Next slide, please. And what I think has caused a tremendous amount of confusion is people going out and they're measuring the existing road and saying, see, see, it's well over 20% slope. Next slide, please. It's not the road that we're using. We are redoing the road in the section that you show right here, as highlighted more in, in the, the light brown. And we are incorporating retaining walls, so it doesn't exceed the 20% slope. Where they said it was 24, 25% slope was that big yellow area at the bottom to the right, which we're not using at all. This is a fire department compliant access road. Next slide, please. In fact, next slide, please. In fact, we got the fire captain to come out there, Robert Sales, because there was people asserting that you couldn't pull into the driveway off of Pacific Coast Highway. And back in March of 2019, he actually came out with the fire truck to document to the objections of the neighbors and to the local plan check reviewers that he could in fact pull the fire engine into this driveway. It will work. It is fire department code compliant. Next slide, please. The maximum number of stories cannot be over two stories. There's been discussion that we should just push the whole structure back. We've got the constraints in regards to the fire department turnaround. But it would result in a four-story structure. And this is also reflected in the staff report. Next slide, please. This is 3.6 residential development standards. In, in no case can it be greater than two stories. Next slide, please. Now, Commissioners, each and every one of these floors is only 700 square foot. Next slide, please. If we were to just whack out sections of the home, it would absolutely get the very nominal amount of development that is being asked by the applicant. Next slide, please. And if you were to take out sections of the home, all you would be doing is exposing the caissons and the bottom of the concrete slab or the bottom of the concrete slab for the floor above and below. And by the way, this isn't going to block beach access. It's setback from the mean high tide line and it's being pulled back from the existing rock revetment. And it's not going to destabilize the site. Next slide, please. In fact, it's going to stabilize the site. It is going to be caissons put down into the ground. It is going to be proper drainage plan. The driveway is going to be pinned with caissons. And as for the Coastal Commission putting deed restrictions for geologic hazard, it's when they were trying to take the property and they lost. And so people who are trying to get you to deny a project here, any project whatsoever, are trying to talk you into, yes, a taking. This is not a cavalier design. It is a very careful, concise design. We have minimized as much as humanly possible, as you can see in this photograph here, the size of the garages. We've made the top of the stairwells glass. All the rest of these houses, these 2,300 square foot houses are underneath the slab and tucked in and comply as much as humanly possible with the applicable code. That part is incontrovertible. So with that, I'd like to wrap it up and turn this over to Mr. Fred Gaines.
How much time is, is left, Patricia?
He has approximately five minutes and 51 seconds.
Fred Gaines?
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commissioners, Fred Gaines of Law Firm Gaines of Stacey on behalf of the applicant. As confirmed in your staff report, the variances in this case are required to allow any viable development of the property. So either you grant the required variances or you deny all development. As I detailed in my letter, the legal principles. It is improper for a local agency to apply its laws so as to eliminate development on a particular site. The city cannot deprive an individual property owner of property rights by exercise of municipal power or by plebiscite of the neighbors. A taking is when the government restriction has such an unduly harsh impact on an owner's use of his or her property that it frustrates his or hers distinct reasonable investment-backed expectations. Like that they'll be able to use the property to build what it's known for, a single-family house. Does that mean the owner gets to do whatever they want? No. Does it mean that if you deny all use or impose conditions which make it uneconomic for, to, to reasonably develop, then yes. That is when owners' constitutional rights are violated and the city becomes liable for damages. And it is exactly why variances are created. They are the mechanism which allow that wrong to be avoided. It is exactly in these circumstances when site constraints of the property are such that the strict application of the code will divide, deprive the property owner of reasonable use. We've gone over in detail the physical constraints of the property, but it's also the application of the code. In this case, the height of the code, which your staff report talks about, cannot be met. That's why you need a variance. In this case, it's the two-thirds rule where no calculations are possible. You have a rule that can't even be calculated on this property. That's why you vary from the rule to allow the analysis and to go forward. Some of this stems from the zoning here, this beachfront lot, not zoned beachfront. Trying to apply non-beachfront development standards to a beachfront lot. Lot of talk about what the developer knew when the developer bought this, when the applicant bought this property. The applicant met with the city, first with Joyce Parker, with the city attorney, then with Bonnie Blue. All agreed that the way to deal with this circumstance was not to rezone the property, but to apply for variances. That's how the city has dealt with this on similar properties where you had beachfront properties with non-beachfront standards. Some of you are familiar with the caisson Latigo Shore Drive that I handled before, before you in 2018. And you, you've made the findings before that the strict application of non-beachfront zoning and non-beachfront development standards deprives the subject property of the privileges enjoyed by other neighboring and adjacent property owners. You've made the finding that the strict application of the ordinances would preclude development of the property. And you've made the finding that no alternatives exist that would eliminate the need for the required variances. You've made those findings in these types of circumstances. And so you have variances that are required, findings that can be made, city precedent for how to deal with these issues when the law doesn't fit to allow for reasonable use of the property. In addition, there is absolutely no evidence that any further reduction in size or, or viable physical redesign will reduce the impacts of the project. The impacts, as you heard, are the view. And you, whether it's one house or three, whether that structure for the fire turnaround is the same. We have done, as you saw, a number of improvements to make it more see-through, to, to get rid of the housing around the stairwells and so forth. But we keep, we've heard over and over about alternatives, including in your staff report, including in testimony today, without anyone suggesting a specific viable alternative. There is not one before you. It's been seven years and since the application's been made. It's, it was the early 2010s when we started this process with the city. And this applicant has pursued every reasonable economically viable alternative and waited three, almost, we're coming up on almost four years since the last planning commission hearing to get back to you with, with those, with those changes. The opposition you know, Mr. Saitman himself bought the property with the road in place, knowing that there was going to be development at the bottom of that road. Admits knowing that the lots had access and could be developed, tried buying the property himself for development purposes and has private litigation ongoing. By the way, there's private litigation ongoing regarding the easements. It is not the commission's role to get involved in these arguments about these easements and how they apply. The access will continue. It'll be moved pursuant to the language of the easements. But again, do not insert, I urge you, and I, your city attorney will urge you not to insert yourself into these private into these private disputes. Finally, you have just a very, very interesting arguments being made. What, what is the constitutional right to make use of your property is being called a loophole. You're being asked to ignore the judgment of, of the court on the geology. Ignore the sign-offs on the, on, on the geology. Why are we even having a hearing we're being asked? Sure, why should we have due process? It's this, these are not the arguments that a reasonable city and a reasonable commission will listen to. What they will do is understand that these variances are required in order to develop anything on the property and to avoid violating this property owner's rights. And it's time to come, come in, look at this project, suggest whatever alternatives actually do exist. Let's hear them out and then let's get forward on putting this project forward after all of these years. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Fred. Is there any time remaining of the applicants? Cash?
No, there is no time remaining.
Okay, that concludes the public hearing. We're back at the commission table. Yes, John?
I just want to start out with a couple, so everybody can go around the, around Robin. First, I wanted to say I talked to the city attorney on another item. And he advised me not to get into the law, since I'm not a lawyer, and talk about takings. Since I'm not trained. And so I'm not going to do that. First, I have a question of Jessica. You had a diagram where you showed the, and if you could put it up, I'd like to see it, where you showed that a house was 43 and a half feet. And what I want to, once we get it up, I'll make my point, but.
Let's slide nine.
Okay. Right. This property, and correct me if I'm wrong, city attorney, this property is zoned residential. So all this talk about it being a beachfront lot, it's not. It needs to be rezoned. So you've measured 43 and a half feet, but you're not measuring from natural grade like Don Schmitz measured. You're measured from finished floor of the first, first floor. And in residential, you measure from natural grade. So this house, in my way, I look at it is at least 50 feet tall. And I, so I think we want to point that out. We can't mix codes. This is a residential, our zoned lot. We have to follow our zone codes. Am I wrong on that? Is this not an Arizona?
Who was the question addressed to, John?
Jessica, I guess.
I, I think Commissioner Ma was actually was intending Pat Donigan.
Okay, Pat Donigan.
Correct. Yeah, yeah, yes. The, the zoning of the, of the property is accurately reflected in the, in the staff report, so we're.
So I just want to point out, this is not a, a 43 and a quarter foot tall, tall house. And there's a lot of other statements that were made by both, by all the parties about beachfront zoning, et cetera, which are not applicable. Now, my next question would be Reggie Brown, if I could get him up there.
Just. Fred Brown, please.
Chairman, or Commissioner Ma, I'm here.
Okay, the Coastal Commission wrote us a letter. And they say that you used. And they say that you used a nineteen twenty-eight mean-high tidal line, and they're wondering why you didn't use the two thousand fourteen, fifteen line. Is there a reason for that?
Well, we use every mean-high tidal line that we can get our hands on. And the, the way the LCP is written is that we have to use the most landward mean-high tidal line of record. And, and that would, we established then a ten-foot setback line behind that mean-high tidal line.
Okay, there, I just want to point out that they're saying in a letter from this, from the State Lands Commission in October fourteenth, two thousand fifteen, that the twenty-fourteen line should have been used. My second question is, you used a seventy-five-year wave-up rush. It's, I think, six and a quarter. When the coastals put out a one-hundred-year requirement, in fact, it's in the code, one-hundred-year requirement. And they're now presently stating, as I understand it, eight and a half. Why did you use seventy-five years?
Seventy-five years is what other projects have been approved by, on, by the Coastal Commission.
Okay, but our code says a hundred, correct?
Yeah, and it all depends on which scenario you're, you're talking about. You're, you, you have the low-risk aversion scenario. And a hundred years for the low-risk aversion scenario is four, little over four feet. On the scenario that the Coastal Commission uses to get that six-point-two-eight-foot sea level rise in seventy-five years, at a hundred years, that would be eight-point-six feet of sea level rise, okay? I want to point out that the Coastal Commission's own numbers on the probability of that happening is, it's about a half of one percent, okay? So it's got ninety-nine-point-five percent probability of not being met, okay? So you, you have that going, you know, for this, you know, the, the high probability of this not happening, okay? Now, in order for us to be on track for that scenario, the, which, which is called the medium-to-high risk aversion scenario, the zero-point-five percent probability scenario. We, we can, in, in the year twenty-twenty, NOAA said that in order for that scenario to be on track, the mean sea level rise rate had to be eight millimeters per year. Currently, we are at one-point-five-four millimeters per year. Substantially less, substantially less.
No, I understand. Okay, I understand that. I just, I don't know what the rumble is, but we know that the Coastal Commission has put out guidelines to use the, the medium-high and to use the hundred years. And it's apparent to me that there's enough lawyers in the room, that's where it's headed, so. I just wanted to point out what the Coastal Commission wrote in their letter to us. Okay, Jeff, you can go on to some, somebody else will rotate.
All right, we have anybody else which is, yes, Craig?
I have a number of questions for staff, but I'm, I'm wondering if, before we get too deeply into this, should we take our five-minute break? So we don't break up the flow as we go, because I'm getting close.
What's your pleasure? If we're going to take five, we're better.
I'm, I'm seeing, I'm seeing. Yeah.
Ten minutes, we'll be back at twenty-five minutes of, of the hour.
Good, let's do it right. Thank you.
Let's have no discussion with anybody because we're in the middle of a hearing, so turn off your cameras, et cetera.
You are.
Okay. All right, Craig, before we get into the weeds on this thing, it may, you know, we all delighted getting into the details of why did staff do this and why did staff do that, but I'm, I want to make a motion before we get into that. Staff recommendation is to deny this project. I gotta say, I agreed with, I, I agree with virtually everything that Fred Gaines said. There is almost nothing that he said that wouldn't, that wouldn't come right out of Mr. Hagan's attorney's firm's books, Miller and Star California Real Estate. But you keep parsing those principles, it, which I agree with individually, every one of them, but you keep layering them on on more and more difficult pieces of property. And even though individually I agree with all of them cumulatively, you end up with what I see as a very bad project. So I'm going to move staff recommendation. And let's see if I got a second, then we can go from there.
I second it.
Okay, you first. Okay, I would like to make an amendment to that if possible. And that is that finding three says that this, this is approved because it denies them what similar people got. But the only example they give is about seven miles away, and the finding says that it must be consistent with surrounding land usage. And this two-eight, two-eight-one-one-eight is the, before you get to Point Dune. So it's actually more than.
John, you're gonna have to help me out here. You're asking me to agree to an amendment, and what finding are you talking about?
I'm finding, finding, well, we got two things, but I'm looking on staff report, page eighteen, finding number three.
Is this four B?
Well, that's hard for me to figure out. It's variance, oh, it's construction of slopes. I guess, I guess it's C, it's construction of slopes in excess of two and a half to one.
Okay, I, I see what you're saying there.
And I'm on finding three, which seven, well, eight or nine miles away is. with seven, well, eight or nine miles away is not
Okay, John, let me suggest that you take a win here. Let it go. Cause I'm not gonna do it and I'm not gonna agree to it. You make it as an amendment if you want, but I, I think
In other words, I can count to three. I, okay, I agree, I can count to three. I'd like to have us, at least, this is obviously going to be appealed. There's no question about it. You can see all the lawyers in the room. I'd like to, at least if we can, and Patrick can tell us, to have staff correct some of the exhibits. Because we know for a fact, for example, that there's been a slide on this property since the slope analysis and these houses are planned exactly to the square foot of what's allowed. And obviously, you look at that tarp down the side of the hill, obviously, there's a high potential that the one-to-one slope analysis incorrect because it was done four years prior to that slide. So I would at least like the council or whoever this gets appealed to, to have a real life slope analysis because this does affect the size of the building.
It seems to me that all of those things could be, can be argued to the council if and when this matter does go on appeal.
Well, my, my question is, is it up to, and this is to Patrick. When we see something that we didn't get to make on a decision, we, we didn't get one that is necessary to make a decision, is it up to the, is it up to the public to have to come to the next body and say, hey, by the way, the staff didn't give you what they were supposed to? Or can we ask staff to please provide the next body with the right information? When it's obviously incorrect.
Patrick. Correct. And so, and so we, we as a planning commission cannot dictate what is or is not in the record at the, at the city council level, i.e. we cannot guarantee something that's, that's isn't here right now is going to be there later. I believe I understand your point. I believe staff understands your point. However, in a motion for, for, for denial, that, that, that explicit direction that you staff, no matter what happens, you must make sure something else is, is included in the record with likely, yeah, actually not likely, would not be appropriate. This whole, this whole discussion is going to be in the record. This video is going to be in the record. Should someone want to make that argument, Chair Jennings, you know, hit the nail on the head. When he said that they can make that at, at, at city council and staff can of course take your, you know, take your direction and make their own independent judgment, whether or not the, those exhibits are accurate or not at the city council level, should it get there?
Okay, so, so if we see something like a hill with a black tarp on it and a report of a slide by the coastal commission, can we take that in our deliberation? Or do we have to have it written by the staff?
I, no, if, if, if you had seen that and you have noticed that and you, and you have, you know, made that kind of ex parte statement and allowed the, the public and the applicant to respond to it, that's, that's fine. You can, you can rely on that. You're, you're not bound solely by what, by what staff gives you.
Okay. And Jeff, you're not willing to entertain.
My motion is my motion.
And no, no amendments. Okay, that's the way we go in this commission. Let's go to seventy-two foot retaining wall.
What's that?
I was just gonna say, you know, after all these years of me sitting and watching you two talk about things, Commissioner Mazza, you're looking at gift horse in the mouth. He's actually handed you something he's that never happens on this commission where you two would agree, but you think you gotta find something else to try and slam somebody about. Jesus, he just gave you the whole thing. Agree to it.
This is what's wrong with this commission.
No.
You consider, you consider following the code a gift horse. That's what's
John, John.
I am going to vote yes. I'm not going to, I'm not going to try to make amendments because fourteen months from now, it'll all change back. Thank you.
And Chair Jennings, I apologize if I missed this, Richard, Jessica, you had, was your motion, because I understand we've heard both items together, was your motion to agenda item four B or four C?
I'm sorry. It was, there were, actually, there were two motions on four B and four C. The motion was to accept the staff recommendation on four B and to accept the staff recommendation on four C. And that was what David, I asked David if that was your agreement.
That was your second? Perfect. Sorry about that. Thank you. Thank you for declaring.
Or is there further discussion on the motion? Yes, Craig?
Yeah. Yeah, I had some questions. I thought I was gonna really learn something here tonight, and I guess we're not going there. But I, I think nonetheless, I should put some points out. Just put the questions out hanging out there. They could be addressed at a later date or somebody might want to pick them up on the, in the record on any sort of appeal. So if I could be indulged to just quickly through, click through all my points.
The, the motion is pending and it's up for discussion. So if you want to discuss through the motion, go ahead.
Yeah. Okay. So firstly, when I'm looking at the twenty eighteen, a lot of the discussion was about acknowledging that it wouldn't work with the, the platform, the, the road was too steep and they expressly asked for a continuance then so that they could redesign the access road on the property above, on Satman's property, getting together with him, knowing that there was a legal case that we don't know the details about it. And tonight we heard from Fred Gaines that we don't want to talk about that case, but Don just opened the door about it by showing us that map that, that showed the only way they do the project is by regrading a road on Satman's property. He showed us that diagram. So I had a question about that, about just, is, is that piece of property and that regraded road necessary and part of this project or not? And it sounds like maybe it is. So I'll just leave, I'll just put the points there since we're trying to move quickly on this. On the platform issue, I think there's been a lot of misreading about what the fire department really said about it because they said, well, in his presentation, Don mentioned, quote, "The house is underneath the slab," end quote. And it's not simply that they wanted the house not to be under the hammerhead. They wanted it none of that slab on top of any of the protected premise. And they expressly said the turnaround area and firefighting area of operations not placed on top of the protected. So the whole notion of using slab, the way they presented it to me, it seems very problematic. Next. Big questions about this easement that the neighbors have brought up about the pedestrian easement and, and a court ratifying that. I, I don't know where we're going with that, but that, that seems to be, it needs to be worked out. On the site plan review for construction on slopes, I don't think we got any evidence of, or about anything relevant to a side plan review normally, like evidence towards neighborhood character. And I think we've heard some of that from the neighbors that they feel like it's not part of the neighborhood character, but, but that would have been nice to see more of that. A couple of legal questions and Patrick, you maybe half an ear here now. I, it's not clear to me whether it's possible to do a lot line adjustment if it creates lot, a lot or lots that require variances. I think I understood from somewhere that that's, you can't be creating a lot that requires variances. And I guess you don't need to answer that now. Also, I think you cannot build on one-to-one slope, period. I think
Not one-to-one.
What was that, Dennis?
They're not one-to-one.
Well, there, there is one-to-one. That, that takes me to my other point, back to John's about measuring and had the fact that the slope study was old. They, they count cumulatively one thousand nine hundred and eight square feet of one-to-one on the three lots. When I was there, I counted at least twenty-five hundred and, you know, within 10% accuracy. So there, there are at least a couple hundred, at least.
You brought, you brought a survey crew with you, you brought a registered survey crew with you, and you went through all that. Is that what you did?
I, I brought my feet, which are exactly one foot long. I brought, you know, I did, I did a back of the envelope eyeball calculation and it was so much higher than what they stated.
Of course. Dennis, you wouldn't rely on a seven-year-old survey grading.
All right. You guys gotta talk, right?
Yeah.
You have to talk.
Um. Okay, easements, the lot area. Okay, we've just talked about that. Survey day. Oh, getting through these things quickly. Okay, on the variances, I, I find it troubling, a lot of this discussion about obligations and hardship and the necessity and they're expressly saying that it's a pressure release valve. No, you, you have to come up with the, the findings for the variance. So for example, just for example, are there any other houses in the vicinity that are over fifty feet tall? Or are there other houses in the vicinity allowed greater than twenty degrees on the access road and so forth? And we, we haven't gotten any of those kind of showing for variances. All we've gotten is the hardship argument that, oh, we can't do anything else. But okay, I'll keep moving. Coastal bluff, no construction in coastal bluff. We need the, the fifty-foot minimum nominally hundred-foot setback. You can't call it a beach house because of the zoning. Okay, we're past all that. I mentioned the fire department turnaround, the steepness of the driveway. We have a study that shows it averaged twenty-two or twenty-three percent slope.
Measured from where?
That's, that's from Chris Nelson and that's, I'm, okay, he, Chris Nelson provided nine numbers on the slope. If you average the top five that are on Satman's property, that is twenty-two point oh-three degrees. If you include all nine measurements, it's twenty-one point six five. That's, that's Chris Nelson's numbers. On the geology, we don't have a factor of safety number. We need the one point five. We have local, meanwhile, we have local eyewitness documentation of the history of the slides as an ongoing thing. We have Jacob Holt from Land Phases in the last hearing, talking about, he, he wouldn't sign his reputation on this. He said it is substandard stability. The geotechnical review sheet says it's approved by Christine, but in the comments, they find substantial problems with the analysis. There's a long paragraph of all the problems that are in the geotechnical analysis and it ends with the applicable equations and their input variables shall be listed and explained on the calculation sheet. Please resubmit. So I don't know that it's not irresponsible to approve something that has all the shortcomings that were listed on that. And that seems like it would be a liability to the city to check off on something that, while saying it's fundamentally not stable. Okay, we have the coastal commission stuff, TDSF, there's approximately four hundred and fifty square feet of covered deck built into the inside of each property, like a, like sort of the atrium area that has not been counted as TDSF, even though it's covered area. So that puts them over the, the TDSF for the lots. The building height, we've talked about the building height already and I, I still didn't understand. John pointed out that, yes, it is RR two, so we should be measuring the building, not like we would measure a beach house. And I think if you measure from natural grade here, you have to account for the pilings and I don't understand why we wouldn't, because that's part of the height of the house. And that gets you over sixty feet. It's over sixty feet high if you measure those in. Can't make the height variance because an alternative design could result in lower height structure, two-thirds of all. Well, getting to the last page. Lot line adjustment, you have to make a finding that as a result of it, that future development on the reconfigured parcels, and here I'm quoting from fifteen point five LIP, that the, the future development on the reconfigured parcels will not have greater adverse visual impacts from scenic road, public trail or trail easement or public beach than what would have occurred from development on the existing parcels. We don't have evidence of that. Theoretically, you could put, put three tiny houses that would collectively block less view because they would have setbacks between them. So you could see between them. Not having such a single large house or two single large houses on the beach might, you might be able mitigate some of the view impact to the beach. We just haven't looked at any of those things in terms of whether the lot line adjustment can be allowed. Yeah, I, and I had a few other thoughts about takings, but I'll take John's cue and
All right, can we please, if there's no further discussion, can we call the roll, please?
Yes, Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile.
Is this on, sorry, is this on both, both at the same time, just to
Do, all right, Patrick, you want us to do both or one at a time?
Yeah, it, it's probably best
Okay, this will be on, on, on four, or C, right, the first. You want to call it again, please?
One second.
Oh, yeah, sorry. This is on four C.
This is only on four C at this time? One moment, please. Let me modify the motion online.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
No worries.
I'm sorry, I've kept everyone from the lightning show.
All right, let's start that again. Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza.
Unfortunately, yes.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Motion carries.
All right, and this will be on four D. Same motion.
One second. One second, please.
I, I apologize. Is that, is that the right, is it four B or four D?
B.
B.
Have I got them mixed up?
Yeah, that's fine. So, so that, that was on four C, that's fine. This one's four B.
Okay, four B then. All right. You got that, Patricia, that confused you beyond recall here?
No, it's just technology. One moment, please.
Okay.
Let me clear the votes. All right. Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Vice Chair Wile.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza.
Unfortunately, yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yep.
Motion carries.
All right, motion to adjourn.
I want to thank the audience for participating and I make a motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Vice Chair Wile.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yep.
Chair Jennings.
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.
Adios.
Thank you all. Good night.
Go Dodgers.